Mayor Peck.
Present.
Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Waters.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Yevakorum.
Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Masking at these in-person meetings is voluntary, and welcome to anyone choosing to wear a mask. You're allowed to do that. Those choosing to watch the livestream may do so in these ways. You can go to the video link on the city's Agenda Management portal at www-longmontcolorado.gov/Agendas. You can also go to the city's YouTube channel, which is Longmont YouTube Live. You can also go to, again, the Longmont Public Media website, longmontpublicmedia.org/watch, and as usual, on Comcast at Channels 8 and 880. I just am really excited to see everybody's faces out there. It's been a while, so welcome. Reminder to the public, public participation at regular and special council meetings is regulated by Rule 5 of the City Council Rules and Regulations, I'm sorry, Rules of Procedure. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and council rules dictate that one person may not give or assign their time to others. The chair may regulate the time for public participation, may restrict cumulative or redundant presentations, and may require that each speaker's comments pertain to the subject under discussion. Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard shall add his or her name to the public invited-to-be-heard signup list prior to the start of the meeting, and it was on a table outside in the foyer. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at the first public invited-to-be-heard on a published public hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak on second reading or public hearing item are asked to add their name to the speaker list for each second reading public hearing item they wish to speak on prior to the start of the meeting. So that's when we have our second reading agenda, when items are brought back for the second time. You may want to speak just on that item, then that's what you sign up to speak on. Anyone wishing to speak during final call and public invited-to-be-heard at the end of the meeting will be invited to do so with no sign up. Phew, that's a lot of reading. So now we have the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 8, 2022?
They're moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the minutes have been moved by Tim Waters, seconded by Councilor Hidalgo Ferring. Let's vote. All those in favor, say, push yea or nay.
Yeah.
He doesn't want to go.
Yeah, it doesn't want to go. So I'm a yea. So that carried, that vote carried unanimously. Thank you. And this, okay, great. Are there any councilors that want to add revisions or to future agenda items, or submissions of documents, or motions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
No report from mayor and council.
Okay, thank you. We have three special reports and presentations on the agenda. We have one dedication, which we're going to do right now, of the Longmont Colorado painting from the Art in Public Places program. And who do we have presenting that?
Madam Mayor, councilors, and members of city staff.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilors, members of city staff, and citizens of Longmont, good evening. My name is Randy Long, and I proudly serve as the Chair of the City of Longmont Art and Public Places Commission. I've been a faithful Longmonster for 12 years, and I'm honored to be invited to present to you this evening. Tonight, I'm happy to be joined by members of Art in Public Places to dedicate this artwork in commemoration of Longmont's 150 years as a gift to the citizens of Longmont. This original painting by artist Julie Lydell depicts a scene that we call home, our beloved Twin Peaks overlooking Macintosh Lake. Julie Lydell holds a degree in graphic design and is a trained Roy Kauf Renaissance craftswoman, thus continuing a centuries-old tradition. Her works depict recognizable landscapes and cityscapes in our centennial state. Inspired by the arts and crafts movement, Lydell utilizes color, line, and form to convey a nostalgic sensibility. She strives to creatively translate nature, architecture, and beauty into craft-style works of art. We are pleased to have this work in our city collection. The Art in Public Places Commission are stewards of the city public art collection. We manage the origination and care of the public art collection utilizing task forces and selection panels in our community. Some of our well-known programs include Shock Art, which are those big giant green electrical boxes that you see around the city, Art on the Move, which is a traveling artwork program, and we care for a vast collection of over 100 total pieces in public spaces. We will be very busy in 2022. You'll see a mural coming soon to the new parking garage going up on the Spoke Building on Kaufman, ground murals coming to several parks, and a new sculpture as well. Our ongoing mission is to diversify the artwork in the collection while engaging the community, enriching our lives, promoting civic pride through city beautification, providing opportunities for local artists, and energizing all our creative citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Julie here tonight? No. That's too bad. Thank you. That is absolutely beautiful. Yep, that deserves an applause. We're going to have to hang that in a very special place. So moving on, I don't know if we can top that, though. That was really great. Moving on, we have a proclamation that I would like to invite Lauren Hendershot and Morgan Lane, they're Niwot High School students, to receive this proclamation. Let me, why don't I read it first, and then you can speak, because I want to hear your story. So this is a proclamation designating March 2022 as International Women's Month in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas International Women's Month is celebrated globally during March by those who believe in gender equality and who seek to improve the lives of all women and girls, two-spirit and non-binary individuals, and their families through cultural, legal, economic, social, and educational change. And whereas women and girls, in particular women with disabilities, racialized women, immigrant women, two-spirit and gender diverse peoples, experience many barriers. And whereas International Women's Month is a time to work toward a world where each woman and girl can exercise her choice, such as getting an education and living in societies free from violence and discrimination. And whereas education for all students should address matters of healthy relationships at age-appropriate levels, including consent and understanding when it has been given or withheld. And whereas the City of Longmont is committed to promoting equity and justice, and will continue to work to address the systemic and cultural barriers that perpetuate inequity. Now, therefore, I, Joan Peck, Mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as International Women's Month in Longmont, and encourage all residents, including parents and students, businesses and visitors, to raise awareness so that all may thrive and build a safer and stronger community. Thank you very much. You want to tell us a little bit about why you did this proclamation?
Hello, and thank you for having us. I'm Morgan Lane.
And I'm Lauren Hendershot.
And we're juniors at Niwot High School.
Niwot offers the opportunity to be a part of the International Baccalaureate Program, which includes a community project.
As our project, we chose to write this proclamation because of the lack of knowledge in relationships regarding consent in our community.
This is important to us because we are aware of the effects that this has on the people in our community, and we believe that it could be solved through education.
With education about consent, we believe that we could work together to create a safer environment for everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I did want to say, these young ladies contacted us earlier in the month. They've been working on this for a very long time. I wish it was March 1 that we could do this, but, you know, take it at any time of the month. Would you ladies like a picture with us?
We'd love a picture.
Let's go get a picture. Oh, yeah, don't let my name fall. So now we're on to our third proclamation. Hold on for a minute. So this is going to be a preliminary feedback on the Sugar Factory and Steam subalternatives and strategies.
go. Perfect. All right. Okay, scoot in just a tiny bit more. Just a, perfect. All right.
So we have Erin Fosdick and who is the principal planner on this project?
Mayor, if I might, pardon me for one moment.
One, two, three.
Yes.
We wondered if it wouldn't be appropriate to take a picture as well with the Art in Public Places group that was here with the picture while we're in the photo-taking moment. Sorry, Erin.
Oh, that's absolutely perfect. I didn't even think of it. Thank you. Okay, we're ready for Erin now.
That'd be great. Thank you. Come on down.
Are they still here? Yeah, they're here. Come on.
Good evening, council. Mayor Peck, hopefully I remember how to do this since it's been a while since we've been in person. My name's Erin Fosdick, and I'm a principal planner with the city's planning division. Joined tonight with representatives from our consultant team, who I'll call up in just a sec, but I'll introduce. We have Nancy Locke, who is representing StanTech, and they're the prime consultant helping us with this project. And also are joined by Danica Powell with Tressle Strategy, and Tressle is helping us with the engagement and outreach for this project. I just want to do a short overview, and then I'll turn it over to Nancy. Tonight, what we want to do is just give council a short update. It's been since December that we were here talking to you about this project, and since that time, we've been doing a lot out in the community, and you'll see a lot of that reflected in the council communication that we provided. So tonight, we're going to give you a short overview of the goals, which you've seen. We've already gotten some feedback from council members on maybe some wordsmithing that we could do, and we'll take a look at that and incorporate that feedback. We'll also spend some time talking about the process and where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. And I do want to note, as I mentioned, we've done a lot of engagement. So since we talked to you in mid-December of last year, we've been visiting with other advisory boards and commissions. We've been visiting with community groups. We've conducted a project survey. We had a Zoom community meeting, so we had a community forum that some of you attended with breakout rooms. We've also engaged with a third-grade cohort at Indian Peaks Elementary, and Councilmember Hidalgo Ferring can talk more about that, and have gotten some preliminary ideas from some third graders, which was really some innovative and interesting ideas. And we've included all of that information in attachment. So we're happy to go through that and talk more about anything if you have questions, but obviously, we included a lot of information in your packet. What we really want to focus on tonight is sort of the next step in the process, and that's really looking at alternatives. So Nancy's going to walk you through alternatives for the Sugar Factory area, for the steam area, and we want some high-level feedback from council before we take this back out to the community and back out to staff to help us develop that preferred alternative. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nancy, and we look forward to our conversation.
Okay. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Nancy Locke, and I will, let's see, do I have a clicker? Yes, I do. Oh, okay. Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, so we are, we're going to start out talking just really briefly about the process that we've been going through here. We started looking at all the work that you've done previously, everything from your Main Street corridor plan, the ULI tap panel, the steam visioning, several other relevant documents. We've also been looking at the existing conditions and looking at the capacity of the land, looking at environmental concerns, looking at the mobility, connectivity issues. And in addition to that, we've been, we did a market study. So all of this information fed into developing goals and strategies for the steam and the Sugar Factory area. The goals and strategies, you've seen them. They, we've gotten some feedback on them, as Erin was saying, but they really do start to form the basis for the alternatives that we're developing. The alternatives represent the input from the engagement. They represent, they have a foot, in reality, relative to the market. They are responding to the existing conditions, the physical conditions, and they develop and they explore ideas. From that, from our alternatives, we will select a preferred alternative, and that alternative will be then vetted with the community once again, and it will roll into a document that will guide the future development of the steam and Sugar Factory areas. So, so thinking about the, for the goals and strategies, we include these here really because these are critical to the elements that are in the alternatives. Every one of these goals and strategies are represented somehow in the physical form or in a potential strategy or policy that could come about through this process. So, you know, number one, focus diversifying housing. Number two, enhancing transportation connectivity. Number three, defining that sense of place, which is so incredible in these areas. And there's a lot to capture and to be true to who Longmont is, the idea of creating community, a place for the community to gather, social spaces, places that empower the community. And then finally, promoting sustainability. The market study is very important to whatever we do in the subarea, and it's important that the proposals are responsive to what the market will support, will allow over the long run. So touching on the really, the high points of the market study, the area in general, Colorado, is seeing a lot of demographic shifts. The age is increasing. Households are demanding more diverse housing. Households are less likely to have children. And there's a growing unaffordability across all income levels. So the, the major underlying driver relative to what we consider as we develop the plan. For housing, you know, attainable housing, specifically, there's a strong demand for missing-middle housing, which is anything from 2 to 19 units, and higher-density housing, which does offer a lot of different options that you won't find around single-family. Very important in Longmont is that one of the big opportunities you have currently is infill, infill opportunities, areas to redevelop areas that are currently underutilized, and as well rental and for-sale units. In terms of somewhat more of the, on the commercial front, industrial, office, and retail, there's a lot of demand for industrial office. The office market is shifting. We're seeing people go with that, work anywhere, live anywhere. And then in terms of retail, there is demand for an agricultural hub, as well as for neighborhood retail. And then the cultural facilities, I think here, the study for the Performing Arts Center really said, yes, there is a demand on that front. So looking at the planning area, there's really, it's a larger area, a little bit less than 300 acres, of which there's really two distinct districts within there. There's the steam area and the Sugar Factory. So this, the study is looking at the whole area with these two districts. It's really important that we are looking at it as a whole area because there are opportunities where you want these two areas to complement one another as opposed to compete, as well as you can look at some broader connectivity issues. The common to both areas, they're underutilized. They represent a gateway to the city. They're positioned on the St. Frain Greenway, and they both include multiple property owners. They have unique qualities. So the steam area, it's anchored by Main Street. It's walkable from downtown, from transit, from the future BRT and rail. There are multiple property owners and a lot of smaller parcels. When you look at Sugar Factory, it's more distant from downtown and existing transit. There are iconic buildings and symbols of Longmont's agricultural heritage, and there are fewer property owners and larger parcels. So there are opportunities that come along with that. So these alternatives, they explore the community visions for future, future land uses that are supported by the market. We will also look at the potential mobility framework in terms of street network, the hierarchy, pedestrian-bike connections, and trails. We're going to look at the relationships between different land uses, and when you start to cluster one land use, how does it work with other land uses that might start to form some synergy? Big opportunities, these are two very significant properties. They, there are opportunities for transformational projects within the city of Longmont. We want to make sure that we capture those. So we have two alternatives for steam and two for the Sugar Factory area. Important to remember, the concepts represent ideas. The preferred plan will likely be a hybrid of the best, most favored ideas. For feedback from council, we are really hoping to hear any fatal flaws. Have we missed opportunities? Are there ideas you like? Are there ideas you dislike? And more generally, are there things that you want us to consider as we go forward, and you may not have heard much about? The next step of this process will be to get community input on these alternatives and to develop that preferred plan. This is a, we've heard a lot from the community. You're going to see a lot of these elements in each of the plan. I won't go through them now. So first off, we'll look at the mobility framework. This, this area is really surrounded, the subarea is surrounded by a lot of large-capacity roadways. It does not have a lot of internal local road networks, and access is somewhat limited. We are looking at how do we expand that, and looking at it both from connection between the subareas and, but pedestrian and bike connectivity as well. So common to, we have two alternative, well, really, two and a half alternatives here. Common to both schemes is Third Avenue. We've heard a lot about increasing safety at the pedestrian crossings, creating more pedestrian crossings from the neighborhoods to the north, down to the south. We are also common to the schemes is relying more heavily on trails as mobility. So the St. Frain Greenway being a really important corridor, connecting people from the Sugar Factory area to the downtown and to the steam area. We, we have some challenges as we look at connectivity. We've got existing railroad crossings. We, in one scheme, we look at maintaining those, and in one scheme, we look at potentially acquiring another. So there's definitely a lot of options here. Also common to all schemes is the extension of Emery Street down into the steam area. And, and so moving on, looking at option one, so that's there on the, on the top. The, in this scheme, we are getting, we're looking at how do we really knit together steam and the Sugar Factory area. We look at connectivity along First Avenue in the, in the steam area, a slight jog, and utilizing Second Avenue, it's dropped to the south of Third, that then connects into Rogers Road and, and then into the Sugar Mill roadway. It's not ideal. It's not a direct connection. A direct connection is not absolutely necessary, but this is sort of the least difficult connection to make. Also, in the first scheme, you can see that there's using the rail corridor as a, tying it with a multi-use pathway that links along First and along the rail corridor over into the Sugar Factory area. In the second option, so option 2A, looks at an at-grade crossing, a connection from, between, there's a connection from First that goes over the rail line at the spur and continues down to connect with Sugar Mill Road. That option can actually be at-grade, or it could be a flyover, and in that case, you do not need to have a The, in, in this scheme, we are getting, we're looking at how do we really knit together STEAM and the Sugar Factory area? We look at connectivity along First Avenue in the, in the STEAM area, a slight jog. And utilizing Second Avenue, it's, it's dropped to the south of Third. That then connects into Rogers Road and, and down into the Sugar Mill roadway. It's not ideal. It's not a direct connection. Direct, a direct connection is not absolutely necessary. But this is sort of the least difficult connection to make. Also, in the first scheme, you can see that there's using the rail corridor as a, tying it with a multi-use pathway that links along First and along the rail corridor over into the Sugar Factory area. In the second option, so option two A looks at an, an at-grade crossing. A, a connection from, between. There's a connection from First that goes over the rail line at the spur and continues down to connect with Sugar Mill Road. That option can actually be at grade or it could be a flyover. And, and in that case, you do not need to have a rail crossing. Challenge with that, of course, is that there's a, a large cost associated with a flyover over the spur line. So getting into the, the options at the STEAM area. STEAM is, is interesting as we, we said, you know, it's about 90 acres. It's got that positioning along Main Street. It's very important. And it's real, really right at the front door of Dickens Park. So there's a lot to work with there. It's also walkable to the future BRT, which, I think I can point, maybe I can't point. The future BRT there that, that's at First and, and Main. The, we look at two alternatives. The first one says, what if we create this cultural arts core? We, we locate the Performing Arts Center there. We locate a live music venue. We position a conference center and hotel in this location. We anchor it along a plaza or a park space that becomes a use for outdoor festivals. We surround the site with more higher density residential. And, and, and that represents one of the big opportunities. So the second says, what if we don't have the Performing Arts Center here? We look at a different location in the Sugar Factory area. But we develop more of a mixed use hub, which is, has a mix of office, has a mix of, of food hall, food market, some retail. The conference center could be located here. There is residential, but we include more kind of office, office uses or potential campus uses that become, that become more of an economic driver and supports economic growth in terms of jobs. So the cultural district plan, you can see the, the Performing Arts Center located there fronting on Main Street. You can see that plaza. And then that hotel and conference center area really fronts on the, on the park. It becomes very prominent on the park. They're connected through a Emory Street and the extension there with, which is more of a shared street, which is also activated by Live Work, that's activated by some retail. There's a, a higher level of, there's probably more higher density housing in this. And you can also see there's on the, the right side over towards Martin in Boston, there is a, a potential nature center. We heard that from the community or other arts facilities. And then the second option, you can see with a, a little more zoomed in, there's the, the, there's the food market there in that red bar just across the, the green space. You can start to see that kind of trails, multi-use trail corridor along the rails, intersecting with the Emory Street extension, that hub. And then on the opposite side, you've got the, the city property and you've got the potential for the office or, or other uses. One of the big things here is to create this big gateway on the park that, that terminates from Emory. And looking at some images, the images really kind of help to give you a better kind of sense of, of what we're talking about. The, the Performing Arts Center really can add, it, it can be an iconic building architecturally. It's, it, it's a very strong anchor to this area. But the outdoor uses, the, the plazas, the open spaces that can be used for a flow of indoor activities into the outdoors, different events, the, the shared street. You can see this image on the upper right. It's in Lubbock, Texas, in their cultural district. That becomes very, a very active area. On the lower left, it's a facility in Denver, the Mission Ballroom, where you have a live music venue and the associated outdoor spaces. And then the image on the right is the Jackson Hole Center for the Arts. And this is a, a very beloved performing arts center located right in the heart of the downtown, anchored on a, a community park. The Santa Fe Rail Yard is a great precedent for this area. So down in, in Santa Fe, there's the, the rail corridor. There's a number of arts facilities. There's a, a long corridor that connects them. It's called the Alameda. There's everything from movie theaters to restaurants, to breweries, to art galleries, to, to arts institutions. It's a very dynamic place. You can have festivals on the street. You, you can have markets inside and out. And it, it is potentially a great precedent for, for Longmont to consider. The idea of mixed use development, you get that higher density of residential units that can start, start to support some additional retail, a mix of plaza spaces, a mix of office uses. This is St. Anthony's redevelopment in Denver along Colfax or on the Sloans Lake area. There's actually a movie theater anchored up on the, the corner of Colfax. Thinking about higher density housing, what does it look like? What are the possibilities? Really, the hope is, can higher density housing be very livable, comfortable, surrounded by green spaces, pedestrian corridors, shared spaces? You meet your neighbors. It's also how it's done. You know, you can get ground floor retail, you can get other uses at the retail that activate those public spaces. You can also bring in green building practices, cross laminated timber construction, green roofs. There are, there are a lot of opportunities in, in looking at how you create this more sustainable area. But it's most sustainable by being, getting more people closer to transit and being able to live in a walkable area without having to rely on their car. Thinking about some of the, 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 the public realm elements, the plazas, the streets, the interface with the park. It's Broad Street in Atlanta there, the image of, on the upper left, where it's a street, but it can close down. People take it over. I think we saw a lot of that during the pandemic. The image on the right is the Confluence, or I'm sorry, Commons Park in Denver, where the 16th Street Mall ends, terminates on the park. And you, it's a, a gateway into the park. Maybe there's a possibility like that with STEAM. The Monon Trail in Indiana, it's also a shared street, very active for, for bikes and pedestrians. And it's, it's got uses pro, programmed in along the edges. And then on the right is a, a park in Rhino down in Denver. Mixing in, thinking about office campus, that can be very much integrated into the urban fabric and connected through a series of, of green spaces, pedestrian spaces, and really feel very much like a, a livable urban place. So moving into the Sugar Factory area, there are two, two concepts here. The first is looking at a cultural arts campus where there's a performing arts center as a, a primary element within. And the second is looking at more of an agri hub, maker space, maker doer kind of space. And both look at a, a range of housing, but maybe more with a mix of, of missing middle along with the higher density. The, the cultural campus idea, you can see you create a, a strong campus there in the center core around the existing buildings. The, the, I guess it's called the shed, becomes engaged as also a, a performance area. You can get outdoor amphitheater. You can integrate a variety of uses. And then there's a significant amount of land. So the opportunities for this missing middle housing, when, you know, think about courtyard housing, garden courts, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, three-story walk-up kind of, of units, that really comprises that missing middle as opposed to the higher density. The second option goes more toward, can we explore the idea of this agricultural hub? Greenhouses, technology, research facilities, flex industrial spaces and, and the makers, which are very much part of the, the Longmont brand. And integrating that with other facilities, whether it's farmer's market kind of focus, food incubator spaces, the high-yield urban greenhouses, smaller urban retail. But again, a lot of, a lot of that missing middle housing. And so just going through a few more images, the, a place called the Steel Stacks, it's in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. It's a redo of a, an old steel mill. They integrated a Levitt Pavilion, outdoor music venue, very popular. But it, but they integrated a number of different uses, everything from office to, to STEM type of facilities, to event space, weddings, corporate events, a cultural park, working with the remnants of the old steel mill. Here's some more images of more of a, a cultural park. This project up in the upper left is a, a, an area in Auckland, New Zealand. And it's a very, very cool place. Outdoor movies on the, the old silos. In Duisburg in Germany, playgrounds that integrate with the ruins. So a, a lot of different kind of cool possibilities there. And then a few images of what this missing middle really looks like. Images there on the left in Seattle, the idea of integrating these woo nerves, higher density, but with a, a low-rise sort of development. Integrating garden spaces, agriculture into the middle. A few more examples of that missing middle. You can really get a lot of variety by mixing your housing types. So lots of choices for people of multiple different income levels and styles of living that they're looking for. Both rental and for sale. Images of that, the, the concepts around agricultural heritage, the idea of these open air markets, shops, educational facilities. There's a, this, the project there on the left is greenhouse above, restaurants below. The image there on the lower left is actually a parking garage in Jackson, Wyoming, that integrates a vertical garden along the wall, both screens visually, the, the, the parking garage. And then there's a growdat facility. It's, this is a, a place down in New Orleans where it, it's educational, it brings kids in. They produce crops, but it's also a place for events and, and different programs and is very successful. And one of the last ones we have here is this idea of a maker doer campus. This is another steel, steel mill redevelopment in Pennsylvania where it's a net zero energy district. And they, they used a lot of the old structures. They integrated it with new structures. There's a, a, a very diverse program of uses, everything from office to event space, research and development. I'm not sure if there's housing. And then closer to home, the, the Source is a, another great example. Images there on the left, Urban Outfitters inserting retail spaces. And so, so next steps will be to engage the community through both getting this information up on Engage Longmont, the website, and to do an online presentation of these ideas and hear from people through that forum. We will then develop the preferred plan. We'll look at phasing and infrastructure and draft the sub area plan following that and try and wrap it together. So we have a couple of questions. I, I mentioned them before, but is there anything you saw that it seems off base that we just shouldn't do? Are there things that we missed that should be included here? Anything you like, dislike? And anything you'd like us to think about to sharpen what, what has been developed thus far? And with that, I thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for that. Councilor Martin, I am going to try to.
Ah, it turned red all by itself. Thank you. Yes. It took me a minute be, on the, on the street and trail map slide because you had a, a nice legend for the, the pale features, you know, the existing streets and so on. But, excuse me, are the, the heavy blue lines were new roads? Yeah, I know, I'm all the way back at the beginning.
That's okay.
There you are.
All right.
All right. So the heavy blue lines are newer enhanced roads and the heavy green lines are trails and bikeways? Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. And so I think that no matter how this is done, especially since the images that you highlighted did not show a lot of, of, a lot of parking, which is, you know, something that makes me very happy, that we're looking at transit oriented development, which means that we need to show shuttleways or busways as well and, and where the temporary car storage is going to need to be on the periphery. And it doesn't, I, that didn't really jump out at me in the plan. Could you say a little bit more about how that's expected to work?
Yeah, sure. I think for, for one, there is not transit service into the Sugar Factory area. And we've been looking at different routes where we could loop transit through that site. We do need to have more conversations with city staff on that front. I think the, the assumptions on parking, we did show surface parking in the Sugar Factory area for the, the campus component. The, within the STEAM area, the assumption is that there's on-street parking, parking underneath the footprint of the building, for the most part, for many of those uses. Did I answer your question?
A little bit. I, I would like to also include the economic development partners who have, are, are working on transit oriented development concepts.
Yeah, Mayor Pet, Councilmember Martin, I think that's a great observation. And one of the things that we've been hearing from the community quite a bit is the concept of really looking at building out complete streets. And so that's something, as you know, we've been really working towards at the city. And as Nancy mentioned, we'll be working closely with transportation planning and public works to kind of figure out what our existing roadways, how they could transition to better serve this area, consistent with the community's vision. We also have been working with LEDP and we've presented to a couple of their groups. So they have some good ideas. And I think in the final plan, thinking about what those complete streets look like, how best to serve developments with parking in the short term, in the future, you know, near future, as well as longer term, to your point. I think those are things that we'll bring forward in that, in that final plan.
Could you define the term of art, complete streets for the public, please?
Sure. When we think about a complete street, and I don't know if any of my transportation folks are behind me and can give a better definition because I didn't look, but that's really a street that doesn't prioritize any single mode, but really accommodates all modes of travel. So those would be streets. And when Nancy mentioned, you know, Third Avenue transitioning, that roadway accommodates all modes now, but certainly prioritizes vehicles. And so in a complete street, you'd really look at how are pedestrians, people on bikes or other types of wheels, transit and cars all working together and, you know, all kind of getting the same type of priority.
Thank you. Thank you. So Counselor Waters?
You turn on me, not Counselor Waters.
Oh. I can't see all the numbers here. Are you eight?
He's eight. I'm six.
Okay. Oh, I tried again. I don't have, can you turn it off and on? Because it's not, you're not on here anymore. Now turn it on, please. It's going to take me a while here to get this.
From now on, I should be known as number eight?
I guess so.
Okay, I didn't know that. Are we working with the presumption that the the parking structure on the west side of Main is is going to be developed or constructed so that for venues that require more than street parking, we would assume that 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 would accommodate both the both the BRT, right, bringing people to the transit hub and the parking station would accommodate a large enough numbers of visitors, whether they're coming on the bus or driving, to support a venue within walking distance of that transit hub? Is that is that a fair assumption that we're making here or not? Or is that just to have no role at all? And the reason I ask, Erin, is this. As we looked at the options here, and and where, as we've gone through these processes and where where Performing Arts Center might be, where a post-secondary campus might be versus some of the other amenities we've talked about, it would seem to me that, given the concerns about parking already in the Sugar Factory area, if we if we know we're going to have capacity, it would seem to me we'd be thinking about venues that would that would invite large numbers of people that required parking in proximity to where that parking facility is going to be, where people can park and walk or take the bus and walk to, you know, whatever the venue is going to be. So to move the campus, a post-secondary campus, if we were lucky enough to attract partners and bring Front Range out of the industrial park, you know, far east of that, doesn't make as much sense to me as it does to put it in proximity if we're also lucky enough to win support of Performing Arts and Cultural Center. Thus, the the synergy between those two and the parking needs, for me, put them in the Sugar Beet area for whatever it's worth, if that's the kind of feedback you're looking for.
Yeah, I think that's helpful. And I'll mention.
Did I say Sugar Beet?
Yeah, you did.
And the steam area.
The the other thing that I'll add, just to reinforce the concept that Nancy mentioned, is, you know, we've been carefully studying previous efforts that the community has gone through. And so that does include planning at First and Main. And I see Tony behind me that I'm sure could talk a lot more about that, Main Street Corridor Plan, DDA Master Plan, which all really have more detail on parking, particularly for the steam area. And so I think you're absolutely right that those are the types of things we're considering.
And I I'm going to jump in a little bit, too. So being the city manager here and talking now about the financial implications and how that's going to come into play, that's going to be a significant part of the next set of this. So so for example, I'm starting to, there's interest in the sugar mill. I'm starting to understand some of the financial components with it. And and you you need taxable value there because in order to do some of that work. And so when you have non-taxable properties there in terms of what that does in terms of cleanup, both of these are going to present interesting financial components that are going to have to be in play in terms of what really is reality and and what can be put into that capital stack. So that's part of the next layer of work.
Tony Chacon, redevelopment manager. So in response to the question about the parking garage relative to the transit project we're working on, so right now, the design would look at about 500 total spaces in that garage, of which two about 200 to 250 may be needed for the adjacent development we're trying to achieve there, which would leave the balance on like weekends and evenings available for utilization of other public uses in the area. I think unfortunately, with a successful center, those most that's most probably not the number, we're going to need a lot more parking. So the intention is the steam area and/or the Sugar Factory area were to develop, we would seek partnerships with the developers themselves to build some additional parking into the developments so that we don't have these massive parking lots everywhere. The other thing I think was important, which actually was brought up in this presentation, is that connectivity piece, so that where we do have capacity to park people, we have the means of shuttling people back and forth to those various facilities. And so that's a major component of this planning effort relative to that connectivity issue. It's about transportation and getting people from one location to another. So hopefully that answered your question to some degree. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. For those folks who have been following along on this specific issue, you've heard my, I guess, disagreements with pairing the Steam and Sugar Factory sites. And I think outside of the geographic differences that I've noted before, I appreciate what the consultant has said because it also outlines some other unique property characteristics, such as smaller sites versus larger sites. And one I think that wasn't really mentioned enough is that in the steam area, there's actually more city-owned sites than there is in the steam, or I mean, in the in the Sugar Factory area sites. And so that gives the city in and of itself a lot more leeway to try to affect the kind of change that we're talking about when we're imagining redevelopment of these these sites. So in that sense, to me, in the options that were portrayed to everybody tonight in the presentation, higher density seems to be more suitable for the downtown area, which would be the steam area, right? We've just seen LDDA do an entire project about the downslope, as they called it, a project, where they're trying to get folks down the hill towards First Avenue, Second Avenue, and First Avenue, right? And then that plays into the steam concept. And so having the upslope-downslope thing seems a more appropriate place for, say, a performing arts center, as well as some other redevelopment issues that we're looking at in downtown Longmont, that will provide the kind of amenities, be it hotels, boutique hotels, dining. Those things all seem more appropriate for a performing arts center, per se, and maybe an attached hotel to a conference center to the downtown area versus the Sugar Factory area. And also because of the transit hub that will be directly west in in that that concept. And so to me, it would be option one, I believe, i- in the steam area is preferable to me. Obviously, we see different housing options in both the Steam and Sugar Factory concepts, which I think is absolutely necessary. And I I do believe that it needs to be a mixture in the sense of the missing middle, as well as continuing to look at high density. Because like I said, high density in the downtown area, the steam area, seems much more appropriate as you look at downtowns all across the nation, right? As we saw in the comments, as my fellow colleagues, I'm sure, reviewed the packet, there's a very vast difference between what folks have to say between, don't develop anything at all, what I call the bananas, build absolutely nothing anywhere near anybody's, right? And those folks are saying, yes, we need housing, we need, you know, we need, we need to invigorate our, not that Longmont, we have a very strong economy in Longmont, in my opinion, but we can only do better, right? We can only increase and add on to that. And so I I'm not a bananas guy, but I I do think that there are appropriate places for appropriate things. At the end of the day, my question really is, though, is that so much of of the Sugar Factory area is privately owned properties and parcels. And so without them asking the city of Longmont for taxpayer dollars to do private partner, private-public partners, public-private partnerships, or or help doing some sort of environmental remediation, because we know that's likely to happen based on whatever the the study comes out as, what kind of, outside of changing our codes, can we really expect developers to see our and the community's vision versus what the developer wants to do to, you know, meet their bottom line? And so those are my questions, but those are also my preferences. So thank you.
Mayor Peck, Councilmember Rodriguez, thanks for sharing your your thoughts on the options. It's very helpful. With regard to development at the Sugar Factory, Tony could certainly provide some more information on the cleanup, and we have been working on grant activities for planning for that. We have been working with some potential developers, and they've been working closely with us throughout this planning process. So as as Harold mentioned, you know, one of the things, and as Nancy mentioned, one of the things that we'll be looking at is, what are some of the high-level costs associated with this plan and how might we phase things? You know, I think absolutely, as the ULI TAP report initially stated in 2020, it's unlikely that the Sugar Factory area, and frankly, the Steam Factory area, is going to develop without some type of public-private partnership. What that is, I think, has yet to be determined. But we have been working closely with the potential developers at the Sugar Factory, as well as in the Steam area, to sort of bring them along with this visioning. So it's not that the city is just going to come forward and spring something on them and be like, here you go, you're doing this. We've been talking with them about what their vision is. And I think in the Sugar Factory in particular, because it is such a large area with a lot of a lot of opportunities in the future, there's, it it's helpful for them to understand what the community wants and what what the city's thinking so that we can work together. So we have been in ongoing conversations. I know Tony's had a lot of conversations with those development interests. I think Harold and others are as well. So we're definitely in close communication. And I think, you know, as part of this planning effort, we'll explore what some of those appropriate public-private partnerships could be. And then obviously, you know, if appropriate, bringing those forward.
Yeah, I think that goes to what I said earlier. I think in my conversations, there's definitely an interest in the community and what the community interest is. But I think it's also balancing it with the reality and the financial reality in the property and then seeing how best you can bring those close together and then what, you know, what's gaps and how are you looking at it? And then when you look at the public-private partnerships, you know, similar to what we've done in other areas, is how do you kind of make it isolated, where you're looking at the revenue generated in the area paying for the public-private partnership, where you're not burdening the broader community in certain areas? And I I think that's part of the work to come as we're having those conversations.
Counselor Hidalgo Thuring?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You know, it's getting late, so I, we have a group of our Indian Peaks kids that came. A few of them already had to leave, it was time to go to bed. But, you know, I just wanted to recognize before I get to my my input, but recognize the hard work that they've done and the collective, you know, the collaboration that they pulled together in really identifying what they would like to see, what their families would like to see. And it was really, I was, I was really in awe with the ideas they came up with, the the work and the research that they that they all pulled together to to create their own designs. But overwhelmingly, I saw with each of their projects, it was a sense of like a community hub, so really wanting something for people, for families, to come together, enjoy each other's company, have things to do. And it was, it was like a community-building type with with recreation. So, you know, I don't know, before you all leave, if you wanted to just, if we can, have them stand up really quick. So and acknowledge those of you who are left, thank you. We have some up in front, too. So thank you. So we were really proud of the work that they did. And, you know, and just in honoring that that piece, you know, I I was looking at the two ideas of where the cultural arts campus would be. And it does, you know, I do agree that it makes more sense to be more in the the Sugar Beet, the Sugar Beet Factory area as opposed to to Main Street downtown. And I just, what were some other things? Oh, and then I guess I wanted to know, as we move forward, I mean, it's really dependent on what, you know, the ground and soil studies determine and what needs to be remedied in those areas. Do we know how long that's going to be? What are the costs? I know I I've heard some costs thrown thrown out there. But really, I feel like before we can move forward, we really have to know with what we're working with.
I'll I'll stall while Tony's talking to Harold and then I'll ask him to come up and provide the real information. I will say, just to remind council, that the Sugar Factory itself and the area just to the south where there's currently storage is not actually annexed to the city yet. And so it is within our Longmont planning area. But from a process standpoint, that would need to come back to council first for annexation referral, then a neighborhood meeting, and then a formal annexation process. So there's a lot of steps. And as part of that, we would obviously required some, require some detailed analysis. Tony has been working with Stan Tech and, as I mentioned, submitted a grant to start planning for that cleanup. And I don't know, Tony, if you have any additional information you can share. I know there has been some sampling completed, but I don't know in terms of costs if if that information's available yet.
So Tony Chacon, redevelopment manager. So first of all, we need to say thank you to the regional offices of the Environmental Protection Agency because they have been footing the bill for all the environmental assessment that's being done on the Sugar Mill property right now. And that's in excess of $100,000 of value, just to let you all know. So where we're at right now is they did complete the soil sampling and the water sampling. They had already done the asbestos sampling. But right now, based on the numbers, from a remediation standpoint, you're talking anywhere from 10 to 12, 10 to 15 million dollars of remediation. That's to get rid of the asbestos and possibly some of the ground. So we're working with the state health department right now to figure out how much of the ground contamination we really have to work with or what we can leave and so forth. So we're trying to work with them to get that number down a little bit. The, just to let you know, the major obstacle to the historic buildings is the fact that they're, first of all, there's all sorts of industrial equipment and infrastructure still in the buildings. And some of this stuff is so monstrous, it's going to require demolition to get in there and cut these tanks apart to get them out of the building. And so we're, we just had a meeting the other day trying to decide, how are we going to get these things out of there? And so that cost would also, that range of cost models probably would include that demolition activity. And then the other thing is you could say, well, what about the structures themselves? Well, the good news is that structurally, the buildings are actually sound because it's actually a steel membrane in which there, the brick is actually a facade that's put in between the various metal posts. And so you can actually take the existing brick and rebuild it. We are actually looking at the possibility of taking some of those walls out to get this equipment out and then rebuilding those walls back in place. So don't have any estimate on that. And as we get more information, a more refined number, we'll be glad to come back to council and discuss it with you. Because just to let you know, that will be part of the funding equation from a public-private partnership standpoint. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So and what's interesting is a few of our eight-year-olds had talked about, well, if they remove walls and then they can build, so right there with you, future engineers.
I do want to recognize, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I assumed maybe those were some of your students, but didn't know. So maybe in our next visit to council, we can formalize having them come. I think the ideas they came up with were incredible, and we were fortunate enough to have a couple of the developers that are interested in the in the Sugar Factory participate in the presentation, too. And I think it was interesting that a lot of the ideas the students came up with were similar to ideas that the community has come up with. So I think they're real actionable, and we're just really excited because frankly, the Sugar Factory redevelopment will probably take some time. So they're the ones that can can really enjoy it. So you guys did a great job. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
So it doesn't look like there's anybody else in queue. I do have a couple of comments. And I, first of all, I want to thank you for changing the name from the Sugar Mill to the Sugar Factory. That that makes more sense. It actually defines what it was. So when we talk about the missing middle, that was a huge part of this conversation. I want to remind people that in our development, we have 12% affordable housing, so it won't just be the missing middle. And that's really important as we work equity into everything we do. And we didn't talk about equity at all in this, but I just want you to know that that is a huge part of what Longmont has decided they were going to do, the city, is to remember that everything is equitable that we do. So I also was going to ask questions about the parking garage because even though the dream is we're all going to have jetpacks and fly around, that isn't going to happen. There's, we're still going to have cars, be they electric or combustible engine. So it's really important. So it's really important that, in these large venue items, we do have parking garages. I agree that the Cultural Arts Campus should be in the downtown area, because that, thinking about transportation and out 15 to 20 years, if we're going to have walkable places and big venues, they need to be where the transportation is going to be. To have it out at the Sugar Factory, it would be very far away for a bus or a train at this point in time, as we're working through this. It doesn't seem like that would be a viable area. The other thing that is mentioned a lot, and I don't know if it is a new term that is coming out in presentations, but that people aren't going to have children, or this is not built for families. I think that's very short-sighted. To tell, to say that we're going to build a development, and most people who are going to live there, and this is what I am assuming from what I've heard, they're not interested in having families. There's going to be the middle, working-class area. I think that's real short-sighted. Who knows in 15 years or 20 years that? When I look at the children who have input into this project, I just have a problem with us keep saying that. The other thing, when we talk about the campuses, are we talking, I am hearing retail campuses, cultural campuses, et cetera, but are we still in conversations with universities? And the original conversation that I heard was University and Front Range Community College partnering, and having part of this be a joint campus with possibly student housing or affordable housing around that? Is that still part of the conversation?
Mayor Peck, I think in the concepts that Nancy presented, they're intentionally flexible, right? So that campus could be a number of different types of institutions. And some of the examples she showed were that. I think it could absolutely be a campus for higher education. We do actually have a meeting scheduled with Front Range. They've expressed interest in being more involved in this project. And so potentially, next time we chat, we'll have a little bit more information to share. But I think absolutely, you know, this is not programmed in a way that it's so specific that it would be one type. And I think those are things that would need to remain flexible as we move forward, and could certainly accommodate that type of use.
Oh, that's good to hear.
And I think in terms of universities, we were having conversations. University of Colorado was one of them. I think, obviously, COVID hit, and so everything shifted. And I think, to a certain extent, we will reengage them on this. But I think universities are also, right now, reassessing their world, based on COVID and the impact, and how they're holding classes. It's interesting, I have a daughter in school, and it's the online offerings that they're putting out is significant. And I think to Aaron's point, is how do you have a multi-use facility? And that was one of the things we did talk about with the University of Colorado, where you do have something built really off of our fiber backbone, where you could have really a really high-tech set of rooms, where they could use them for different things. But we have to reengage on that conversation.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. But the biggest question is, next slide going to be out there? Okay, I see her shaking her head. Thank you. Great presentation. This is really, really exciting.
Thank you for your feedback, and we'll be in touch, so to speak.
Okay. So now we're at public-invited-to-be-heard part of our agenda, and we do have six people signed up. So if you're ready, Jeff Moore is the first person that we can call up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Jeff Moore, I live on Little Leaf Court. I'm here tonight to congratulate you on your new digs. Not knowing, has that new car smell, you know? So I want to, the real reason I'm here is I want to introduce Erin Hoard. Erin is our new executive director at Tinker Mill. And I'd like to give her the opportunity to introduce herself and explain how she's going to change Longmont.
Thank you. Hi, Erin.
Hi, council members. And Mayor Peck, thank you for having me. Like Jeff said, I am brand-new here. I just moved here about three weeks ago. And I have to say, I have received just the warmest welcome from literally every single person I have met here in Longmont, and I think that says a lot. So I'm really here to find out, find ways that Tinker Mill can connect with the larger community, and work with, and partner with, and collaborate with partners on the outside. So I'm here to meet all of you, and I've met a few of you so far. I would love to invite everyone here to, every single one of you, to come to Tinker Mill. If you've never been there, it's a makerspace. It is here for you. Generally, people that are interested in Steam come to make a prototype, start a business, connect with the community there, and make something. So please come anytime. I'm there every day. I'd love to show you around. We also give free tours every Sunday from 2:00 to 4:00. So please stop in. But I would love to connect with any one of you, and, you know, find out, find ways that Tinker Mill can help this community to be even stronger and be an asset for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. And I want to say that I did go out and have a tour of Tinker Mill, and I am incredibly impressed by what they, the amount of equipment in there, and the things that you do is overwhelming. And it's, Tinker Mill is a gem in our community, and everyone should go out and at least look at it and see what you can do. You'll probably get really inspired.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I agree.
Next, we have Don Colson. Is Don here? Oh, there he is.
I don't have a driver's license, so look out. Hi, I'm Don Colson, Grant Street. Good evening, council. About two, three weeks ago, I was watching a clip on CNN, and saw something that just broke my heart. There in the middle of a dirty old filthy street in Ukraine, a woman's body lay. And over it hovered a young man sobbing his heart out. His mother was dead. I couldn't watch it. I remember too vividly the towers tumbling in New York, and I sometimes wonder what in heaven's name human beings can do to each other. Tonight, I'd like to speak to council and ask them to throw their support behind whatever we can do to help the people of Ukraine. Three things, or maybe four. The first would be to put the Christmas lights up on all the trees in Longmont, and make them yellow and blue, the color of Ukraine's national colors. Lace the streets with trees filled with yellow and blue lights. The second thing we could do is organize in some manner to have volunteers put together these little ribbon pins, of which, by the way, I brought you some, and give them to every single child in the Longmont system. Now, every one of you people knows someone in other cities. Frontline cities could take, be in the forefront of this push to help these poor people in whatever way we can. Moral support is far better than no support at all. It's not as good as guns and cannons, but it is support. And I'm asking you people to give that broad consideration. Finally, if we could reach out to the Ukraine communities around Boulder County, I'm sure there are many, many people with their footsteps in Ukraine. Maybe they would come forward also and offer other ideas and suggestions that we can do. I'm 89, I'm legally blind, and I'm tied to a wheelchair. This one's got a battery. So I can't do a heck of a lot, and I'd love to do it if I could. And so I'm available if anybody wants to pick my brain. But meanwhile, maybe that child huddling over his mother is a metaphor for Ukraine as we now see it. It's broken, it's defeated, but over that lies hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Don.
How do I get these to you? Thank you very much. I'm sorry?
Do you want your box?
No, no, it's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I got to go around that way.
You're fine. Thank you, Don.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, City Council, and Councilman Waters, and fellow citizens of Longmont. My name is Bruce Halick. I'm on the board of directors for the Homeowners Association, known as the Villas in Pleasant Valley. In November, we provided a number of petitions to Mr. Waters in support of a work project called Spring Gulch II. We favor that, we want it to be funded. It currently is not funded. It also provides drainage into an area in the Villas called Outlet A. That is below water level, and so groundwater perks into it, making it a swamp year-round. As you know, recently, there was an article about West Nile virus, and it's becoming the Goldilocks zone for it. Michael Keatling in Lakewood died in November of last year. He acquired West Nile virus in August. I did, too. I was found unconscious in my home. I was taken to Longmont Memorial. I was in intensive care for 10 days. I was then in a recovery room for another 10 days, and released on the 4th of September. I was released from rehab on the 11th of November of last year. Fortunately, I did not die. I was in good shape. But others may. If we don't get grants from the state or federal funds, and right now, I think most of you know, there's a lot of federal money related to COVID pouring in the states, being used for non-COVID-related projects, to renovation of ballparks and the rest. I would encourage you, and the city planners and other people, to pursue grants within the state, and also the federal, to improve Spring Gulch II, get rid of the mosquitoes. Also, help us to do the renovation work in Outlet A, because I don't think any of you want to wake up anytime this year or next year to the story of someone else dying from West Nile virus that could have been prevented by getting rid of the swamp area in Outlet A and Spring Gulch II.
Thank you. Thank you for the information.
Hi, I'm Brian Johnston in 926 Kaufman Street, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Those of you on the council more than four years may recall the concerns once raised by Karen Antonacci, who was the reporter for The Times Call. This was on how us going to encrypted emergency communications, all emergency communications, would leave us with only reverse 911 as a way to disseminate information to the public during an emergency. At that time, it was cited here that only about 10% of Longmont was signed up for reverse 911. I was at that meeting, had actually just finished, taken emergency management, emergency communication management class in grad school from Dr. Paul Cromwell. You know, I recognized the legitimacy of her concerns, made note of it, I didn't say anything about it at the time. But then after that meeting, when those concerns materialized after the first shelter in place following that meeting, I came to the council and brought it to our attention. You might recall that I brought slides from people online saying, we don't know what's going on, is the shelter, can I leave my house yet? Is it still going on? Because the police just put out the shelter in place, and there was no follow-up, no more information being disseminated. Well, and as I always do when I bring something, I always try to bring solutions to the table. There were two I brought. One, which is, the credit goes to Andrew Knopbaum, the deputy director of Boulder County OEM. He had brought to me the idea of geo-fencing, which is sort of like an Amber Alert, where everyone gets a notification via phone. Problem was, it's time. Amber Alerts were set up, that system went out to all of northeast Colorado. But Andrew was the one public official who was like, yeah, you're right, it should be a concern that we can't reach a large percentage of our citizens, and we're working on it. So I brought those to the table and went on. Well, Saturday, I received an alert. I saw the fire, the in-car fire. I grabbed my SUV and my tow trailer, and I went quickly to see, who can I help evacuate? I was going door-to-door, found a family that needed help. But got a couple of alerts that day. And then on Sunday, I noticed a press release come out. This is from the Boulder County Office of Emergency Management, and it's in your emails. I sent this press release to you about midnight last night. And basically, what they have up and rolling is a geo-fencing system, what they call the wireless emergency alerts. And so I just came to offer two things, or to throw out two things. Number one, if you need to know the importance of effective communication to stakeholders during an emergency, you let me know. I've got lots of, some of the top scholars in the field in public administration that I can send you essays and case studies on. Another good, another great, you know, summary of this is, if you have, is the 9/11 Commission Report. They have a whole section on the importance of disseminating information to responders and the public during an emergency, and how important that is. So I wanted to offer, if you need literature, I got it.
Brian, thank you, and thank you for sending that to us through our emails.
And just, I just wanted to say that we should reach out to Boulder County Office of Emergency Management, and this is something that we need, because the capability only reaches 10% of your citizens during an emergency is pretty irrational. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. It's nice to see everybody's faces again. Thanks for doing this. And I wanted to say, oh, my name is Polly Christensen. I live at 410 Judson Street. Mayor and council members, I wanted to thank Mr. Colson for the very moving words he said. I also wanted to thank the two young women who brought up the March as Women's Month. Unfortunately, this is now the 29th of March, but next year, women, let's get out there and make March something to count. We still don't have the Equal Rights Amendment, and yes, it still is necessary. I also, you have on your calendar, working on Juneteenth, and I applaud you for doing that. It's about time. It's been declared a national holiday, and it's going to be a state holiday and a city holiday. I would urge you to waive the fees for the picnic at Willow Creek Park. It's modest, but it's still not a big moneymaker, and it would be very helpful if you would waive those fees, and that's being organized by Betty N'Ali and any other fees associated with what Madeline Woodley is doing. Anyway, so the thing that I wanted to talk about was, you have something on your calendar tonight to discuss a waiver for VC, for the Veterans Community Project. I am not suggesting that you shouldn't waive this fee, but I do want to point out that this is, the Veterans Community Project, which I helped bring to this city, because I noticed it at a National League of Cities, and I pointed it out to Bonnie Finley, and together, we brought that to this city. So I am very much in favor of this. It's a very good organization. I wanted to, what I wanted to point out is that this is part of a metro district. It is a land donation, it was part of a metro district, and that, the developer of that metro district at the time got to choose who to donate the land to. This is why we cannot have them deciding who to develop the land to, because it needs to be donated to the city, so that the city can evaluate whether these projects are actually viable. Right now, we have, we've had to give additional money to Habitat for Humanity, which is also a wonderful organization. But we've had to back up these two projects, because they were not evaluated by the city. They were evaluated only by the developer. It is true that Kansas City waived their fees, but that's because I spoke to the Kansas City Council. City Councilor when I was out at the groundbreaking, and she said, "Oh, Kansas City, we built, the government built this project." So, okay.
Thank you, Polly.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Strider Binstone.
I don't walk so well, but I bike. I, Strider Binstone, 951 17th, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad we have meetings again. Today, a federal judge gave a ruling, 55 pages, and he pointed out, "If there is no accountability, there is no law." And he indicated that participants in the January 6th insurrection must turn over their records. And he calls January 6th a coup in search of a legal theory. Back in slavery, there was a song called "Many Thousands Gone." The only three ways to get away from a plantation is you were sold, you escaped, or death. The Emmett Till Anti-Lynchings law finally was signed into law today after 140 years and more than 200 attempts. Ida B. Wells started the movement. She was born in slavery, and her parents and three siblings died of yellow fever when she was a teenager. She started teaching school and raising her three younger siblings when she was 16. She moved into Memphis, and then she started a newspaper. When she started investigating lynchings, they burned down her building and her paper, and they tried to kill her. She had to move to Chicago. She was one of the founders of the NAACP, and also one of the key people in the Women's Right to Vote Movement. And she, and also started women's clubs and the Black exhibit in the Chicago World's Fair. She said at one point, "The way to right a wrong is to turn the light of truth upon those wrongs. Those who do not know history are condemned to repeat it. Vladimir Putin wants to be Peter the Great, or Stalin, or both of them. We are facing the possibility of a new civil war in this country initiated by racial oppression, intolerance, destruction of democracy, and the abolition of history in schools. It's happening around the country, and it threatens to happen here. Let's wake up and keep hope alive." Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Are we okay, or do councilors like to take a break? Is there anybody? We're good? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard, invited to be heard? Seeing no one, I close. Public invited to be heard. We are going to go on now to the consent agenda and introduction and reading by title of the first reading ordinances. Don, would you like to read those for us, the items in the consent agenda?
Love to, Mayor. Thank you so much.
This'll take a while.
Yeah, I know. Yes, thank you.
It's a long one.
The ordinances on this consent agenda, Mayor, will be on second reading and public hearing on April 12th, unless otherwise noted. Item 9A is ordinance 2022-09, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the City of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2022. 9B is ordinance 2022-10, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 3.04 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Personnel Rules to add Juneteenth National Independence Day as a city holiday. 9C is ordinance 2022-11, a bill for an ordinance amending the boundaries of the Longmont Downtown Development Authority area by amending ordinance number O2008-104. 9D is ordinance 2022-12, a bill for an ordinance approving the special open space and Quicksilver Road Annexation and Concept Plan, generally located on the east side of County Line Road, south of St. Brain Creek, and north of County Road 20 and 1/2, and Quicksilver Road between 119th Street and County Line Road, and zoning the property N-AG or agriculture. 9E is ordinance 2022-13, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real property known as 12628 Weld County Road 1, as managed by Property Management Plus Realty LLC. 9F is ordinance 2022-14, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the City of Longmont to lease the real properties known as the Smith Property and the Mountain Shores Property to GBT Farms LLC. 9G is resolution 2022-33, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Longmont and the Colorado Department of Transportation for state funding for County Line Road shoulder improvements. This item was removed from consent on March 8th because of an incorrect exhibit. Item 9H is resolution 2022-42, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Longmont and the Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District for an allotment contract for participation in the Southern Water Supply Project Pipeline 2. 9I is resolution 2022-43, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the City of Colorado Springs for an Internet Crimes Against Children program grant offered through the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Office of Juvenile Justice, and Delinquency Programs. 9J is resolution 2022-44, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the local, state, and federal public safety agencies and other partners to establish the Boulder County Threat Advisory Group by Memoranda of Understanding. 9K is resolution 2022-45, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing agreements between the City of Longmont and Plum LLC for the purchase of real property for open space purposes. 9L is resolution 2022-46, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Longmont and Boulder County concerning conservation on the Plum property. 9M is resolution 2022-47, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the Second Amendment to the Fiber Use License intergovernmental agreement between the City of Longmont and Platte River Power Authority. 9N is resolution 2022-48, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Colorado State University for grant funding for research on evaluating the effects of endosomoclima herbicide on soil microbes and native plant communities. 9O is resolution 2022-49, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Longmont and University of Northern Colorado for grant funding for research on the evaluation of the ecological and hydraulic effectiveness of the Resilient St. Brain Project. 9P is resolution 2022-50, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and Colorado State University for grant funding for Sandstone Ranch spring plant monitoring. 9Q is resolution 2022-51, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the State of Colorado for a state aviation grant for airport pavement maintenance at the Vance brand municipal airport. 9R is resolution 2022-52, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the State of Colorado Department of Human Services for household water assistance to Longmont residents. 9S is resolution 2022-53, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City and the University of Colorado for a live performance by the University of Colorado playback ensemble. And 9T is approve revisions to council rules of procedure amending Rule 27 boards regarding the interview process.
That was amazing. I think you need a stand-up ovation. It looks like we have Councilwoman Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. If nobody has anything to pull, I move the consent agenda.
Councilwoman Martin moved the consent agenda, seconded by Mayor Pro-Tim Rodriguez. Saw those in favor? Let's vote. And my screen died, so I'm a yay. Okay. So that passed unanimously. And I am getting my screen back. Thank you. So now we have ordinance on the second reading and public hearings on any matter. If anybody in the public would like to be heard on these, we only have two, three? Three? You can speak on these now. I would like you to sign up if you haven't, or approach the podium, raise your hand, after the ordinance is read. So the first one is a public hearing on Consolidated Annual Performance Report, or CAPER, for 2021 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and CDBG-CV COVID programs. So we have, not a presentation, but... There is a presentation. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. I had no idea what I did to this.
There we go. Got it.
I know.
Mayor Peck, members of council, my name is Molly O'Donnell. I'm the Housing and Community Investment Division Director, and I'd like to report today on the 2021 CDBG and Affordable Housing Program accomplishments. So, starting with our rehab program, we provided a total rehab program assistance in the amount of $83,773. That's 20 total households assisted, at an average cost of $6,981. This is a decrease in volume. I put 2019 in here to compare, since that was our last full program year before COVID. You can tell that's quite a decrease. Eighty-three down from 380 in that year. That is 43 households assisted. It did have a higher average cost, but that is because we had more general rehabs, doing larger projects. The projects that we've had mostly this year are smaller projects for efficiency and heating and cooling. So really, the rehab program is struggling with not enough contractors. Each job is taking longer. We have to bid them multiple times. Costs of materials are going up. So we are really looking this year at how we can target some improvements in that program to make it, to really ramp it back up after COVID. We did only open it in May 2021 as well. For our CDBG program, we offered a grant to Boulder County for the Housing Counseling Program. We fully expended that and assisted 202 residents with over $379,000 leveraged. The security deposit program to support vouchers for the unhoused, that program actually ended up getting covered by the locally funded voucher program. And so we're going to be repurposing those funds to support the Crispin II project here in the next month. We have a $350,000 grant to the Crispin II project that I just mentioned. This will be spent in April, April 29th should be the day, to create 83 new affordable homes, rental homes, and this leverages $26 million more than. Our last CDBG project is the rehab of the Imagine Group home, one of them. This was delayed due to COVID surge, because this is a vulnerable population. So we'd be doing this project this spring. This will preserve affordability and make improvements to better serve the residents there with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Our grants to the Longmont Housing Authority, we spent down $150,000 of the loan principal for the refinance and rehabilitation of Aspen Meadows Senior Apartments. That preserved 50 affordable homes and leveraged another over 14 million. We provided about $6,900 grant to the suites for security measures to improve safety for the residents living there. And we have our CV funding. So this was first reported in 2020, and will be going until we complete the expenditure of this program for the next couple of years. Hopefully not, but we have the ability to do that. We provided rental assistance through the R Center. We spent $105,000 of CV funds, and this is actually in addition to another $103,000 or so of regular CDBG. So we spent over $200,000 providing rental assistance to low and moderate income households impacted by COVID. Together between the two programs, that was 86 households served. Then we have, the rental assistance program through the R Center did complete. There was, it was a struggle using CDBG funds for that, because there was a lot of funding sources available, and our center ended up using a different funding source for that. So we transferred that funding into our Fresh Start Utility Building Assistance Program, and that's about $584,000. So there's nothing spent in 2021, but we did kick off that program towards the end of the year, and we've already spent about $114,000 preventing utility shut-offs for 66 households. So our CDBG program comparisons, so we've expended 37% of our 2021 grant funds. That is kind of in the middle between 20 and 20 and 2019. We are 17% of the way through our CV expenditures. Our 2021 timeliness ratio was 1.54. So this is the first time we've been over the 1.5 limit in years and years. But this was common across communities across the country, so much so that HUD waived the corrective actions for the year 2021. And as long as we meet our 2022 timeliness ratio, we won't have any special actions to complete. We are on track to spend that. It's, we need to spend $519,000 by October 31st, and we expect to be able to do so. This year, we leveraged $83 for every $1 in CDBG funds. This is great news to see when, when a lot of the other COVID-related challenges for the program don't sound as promising, even though we're still delivering great services to our community. But we had two larger development projects that leveraged a lot of funding this year. We spent 16%, 16.4% of our funding on admin, when the cap is 20, and you have those comparison years, it's right, pretty similar in line. And 79% of the funding spent in 2021 benefited low and moderate income residents. This is a change from the last couple of years, and this is really, we had a small number of people that were not low and moderate income through the housing counseling program, but really, it's just our lower total dollar value that's throwing off that number. We're still above the requirement of 70%. Here's our program accomplishments. So you can see from last year how much was unexpended, and then how much is unexpended here this year. So we are higher than last year, but not by very much. The CDBG funds are unspent, the amount that we are unspent. So we really need to get our rehab funding out into the community. That's about $255,000 that we have. The Crispin II project and the Imagine project just happened to timeout to come forward in spring of this year, so those will get expended here quickly. The CV funds, as I mentioned, were difficult to spend for rental assistance due to the regulations and other funding sources, and so we're trying to pivot that towards utility assistance as much as we can. And there's the Fresh Start Utility Assistance. So that's, Fresh Start is definitely the highest balance remaining. In tracking our equity and inclusion for this program, so 56% of the households served had incomes below 30% AMI, and 6% of those had had households, heads of households that were people of color. So some data on that. We are serving more than the representative population in Longmont for Black and African-American households. We are right in line for American Indian and Alaskan Native households, and we are under the representative population for Asian and multiracial households, and we are slightly under 22% serve versus 24% population, representative population for Hispanic ethnicity. So we're doing some, we're doing well in some places, and there's room for improvement to keep an eye out for our engagement practices going forward. For our affordable housing program, we had one major project, process fee waivers this year, and that was $87,943 for the 44 affordable apartments at Greenspire. Our affordable housing projects coming up are the city-owned rehab, city-owned property rehab. This is the Adrian House. This is one of several properties that are owned by Public Works and Natural Resources. This will be, it's out for bidding, and so we're hoping to construct this spring and then get a large family housed. The Habitat for Humanity project is in, this is for pre-development costs for the Rogers Road property, and this one is in development review. Element Properties, this is $250,000 for pre-development costs. This, we have spent this down partially, the... for predevelopment costs. This, we have spent this down partially, the 9% tax credit application process that was completed February 1st. We should hear by May, and we're feeling hopeful about that. And so those, the rest of those funds will, will ramp up. The Cinnamon Park Apartments, we completed this expenditure of $500,000 to support the construction loan for senior housing partners to offer those 25 new affordable senior rentals, and they are leasing up now. We will be, we have not yet expended officially, but we will be starting our affordable housing fund payments to, for the Mustang Affordable Housing Property, the nine-acre property associated with the Costco development. This will now fund infrastructure improvements, so we're gearing up to make those first payments into the fund that will go towards that, since the ARPA funds were leveraged to acquire the property. And the Crispin II Language acquisition, this is, we've discussed this project, but this is for additional support for predevelopment costs. In our ongoing programs, the ADU program, this update is similar to what you saw for last year. That's because we haven't been able to roll this out in 2021 fully. We have been speaking with our partners in planning to try and start thinking about the best way to subsidize this. We've been working with some stakeholders to get some ideas as well. So we do plan on picking that back up. The Planning Facilitator Program, we, is, is by all feedback received, being really helpful for those smaller developers delivering affordable projects. And so that is continuing into the next year. So for our program accomplishments here, we conducted three application cycles last year. We had six applications reviewed. Two were approved for affordable housing funding and three for CDBG. We continue to implement the inclusionary housing program, and this year in 2021, we had a net increase of 10 rental units. 14 for sale units were added, however, four were lost from the prior inclusionary zoning program. So that's 20 net increase for the year. So that puts us ever slightly closer to our goal of 5,400 units by 2035. We also continue to participate in the regional housing, regional affordable housing partnership. We've been working this year with the smaller communities in Boulder County on affordable housing ordinance implementation. We're looking to, at the possibilities of centralizing some regional administration for inclusionary housing related to the data management and some of the more things that make sense to really coordinate across the board, and the possibilities for centralizing down payment assistance and rehab programs. That's one of the ideas to try and make it an easier and more successful program. And then we are coordinating across the jurisdictions for ARPA proposals for affordable housing. So I'd like to open it up for questions from either council, or if you'd like to continue with public hearing.
Thank you very much.
Seeing none, do you have any question in the public that would like to?
Yeah, that would help if you could hear me. So do we have any questions from council? I see none. I'd like to open it up to the public for a public hearing on this ordinance, if anyone would like to speak. Seeing none, I close the public hearing. I would like a motion. Somebody want to make a motion to pass this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. So it was moved by Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor Martin. Let's vote. So that carried unanimously. Thank you. So our next ordinance is a bill for an ordinance approving an amendment to the total property mining and surface use lease agreement between the City of Longmont and Aggregate Industries. Is there a staff report on this? No staff report. Do we have any questions from council on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up to the public. Anybody want to speak on this ordinance from the public? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Do I have a motion to pass this ordinance?
From the ordinance 2022.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. That has been moved by Counselor Waters, seconded by Counselor Yarborough. Let's vote. So that carries, passes unanimously. Thank you. Our last ordinance is a bill for an ordinance amending the Longmont Municipal Code regarding the 2021 addition of the International Building Residential Mechanical Fuel Gas Plumbing Property Maintenance Energy Conservation Swimming Pool and Spa Existing Building and Fire Codes. It's a lot of codes that we're updating. Do we have any comments from council? I'd like to open up the public hearing on this ordinance. Do we have anybody in the public that would like to address it? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Can I have a motion to move ordinance 2022-08?
All moved?
Oh, all second.
So it's been moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. Let's I'm waiting. It isn't showing up. So I, mine's a yay. So that carries unanimously. Thank you. That closes our ordinances on second reading and public hearing. Are we still okay, staff? And do we need a break? Let's take a five-minute break. Thank you.
So I think it's past five minutes. We're all enjoying visiting again without masks. I agree.
Funding.
Right.
We need ongoing funding in one way or another, and that's where we can do a stable
Right. So we are waiting for, uh, no one.
No, we're here.
We're waiting for no one. So there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so we're going to go right to general business and have the presentation by the Veterans Community Project for 100% waiver of development fees. Uh, so is it going to be Joanie or Molly?
Mayor Peck, it'll be a little of both.
Okay, great.
But we're going to invite Mark Solomon with the Veterans Community Project to come up and do a presentation first.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Mark Solomon. I'm a resident of Longmont and a combat veteran. I served in Iraq in 2007, and I recently returned from a year-long deployment in Djibouti, Africa. As part of my continued service in the Navy as a reservist, I have taken an oath to defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Everyone who ever took that oath to serve in the military understood that they have to be willing to give their lives in order to uphold it. My fellow VCP co-founders, also combat vets, came together in 2016 after comparing notes and realizing that our military brothers and sisters were falling through the cracks for services, or worse, being told no, because there's just not enough money to help them. We were outraged and decided to do something about it and founded VCP. This organization has its own oath. We are here to serve those who have served us. A quick overview, we started our work to end veteran homelessness in Kansas City. We now have completed a VCP village which is pictured with 45 tiny houses for individual veterans and four, uh, family, uh, units for veterans and their families. The VCP village also includes a 5,000-square-foot community center that houses wraparound services for our veterans who live in our village. All of our houses are transitional in nature and allow each resident to achieve their goal to move from homelessness to permanent housing at their own pace with a support system and dedicated accountability. So by the numbers, currently, VCP operates in five communities: Kansas City, Longmont, St. Louis, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Oklahoma City, in four states. This year, we have three communities that will start building VCP villages: Longmont, St. Louis, and Sioux Falls. We have demonstrated an 85% transition rate to permanent housing for veterans who are housed with us, and to date, we have served over 5,000 veterans with various services through our outreach centers and our housing through, uh, in all our different communities. So for Longmont, here, we have been, we have already been able to help 270 veterans through our outreach services and recently opened a walk-in center on Main Street. Even though our village isn't yet constructed, we have been able to place 33 veterans into permanent housing. Our plan in Longmont is to build 21 tiny houses for individual veterans and five family houses. That, this is housing with dignity. Each of these houses has tile-backsplash, granite counters, and wood floors. We've designed them with veterans in mind. The beds are in the back corner and the windows are on the opposite side of the tiny houses. This gives a veteran a safe place to control their space. I referenced our family houses just a moment ago. Uh, in Kansas City, we've actually had veterans experience the joy of family reunification as part of our village. We've had more than one veteran regain custody of their children after making significant progress in our program. The houses are actually the tiniest part of what we do, pun intended. Thank you. Our wraparound services are, not to minimize the need, sorry, for a safe place to sleep at night, the wraparound services we provide are critical to our success. There is no tiny house or successful village without a hub or a base camp. For our village services, this base camp is our onsite community center located in the middle of this picture, just in front of that red, uh, car. In Longmont, this will be a 3,000-square-foot facility that will house office space, a great hall for community engagement, uh, space for training, case management, and fellowship. We not only help veterans with skills they will need to reintegrate into permanent housing, like job skills, home skills, et cetera, we also provide them with a network of support. This network will prove critical for their long-term success after they leave our program. While we will only have 26 tiny houses, we will have a positive impact on the lives of hundreds of veterans every single year in Longmont. Through the transition of veterans through our houses, since they are temporary in nature, we move them to permanent housing, and then we reuse the houses. We also have our walk-in services. So every year, we will help hundreds of veterans. So a project timeline, we started our partnership with Longmont in 2018 after this city decided that they wanted to end veteran homelessness in our community. In 2019, the beginning of 2019, I was flying out here every single week to meet, uh, to get this project going. We were also making this partnership work, uh, so well that I decided to move my family here in the summer of 2019. So we are committed to being here. That said, that day that we moved here, I remember that that was the last time I was allowed to address council, so I don't know if that's because I didn't do a good job or what. It's been three years, so we'll see how I do after this. Fast forward to the summer of 2020, when we hired our first veteran services staff and started providing outreach services. We didn't even have an office space, yet we started helping veterans in the community. Uh, our staff was working from their homes and their cars. Many on this council were present when we opened our outreach center in November of last year at Main and Mountain View. Uh, this center is our walk-in service center, where any veteran, they don't have to be homeless, can walk in and get assistance. We are currently at six full-time staff and will soon have approximately 10 full employees in Longmont, full-time employees in Longmont. After we have completed building our village, our operating budget annually will be approximately 1.2 to 1.5 million. We are, and I know we're just getting into spring, I'm going to remind us about winter. We are eight months, and people don't realize that it's very short before the average low temperatures drop below freezing. We need your help to ensure that we don't allow veterans to continue to sleep on the streets for another winter. As you are aware, we don't take any restricted federal funds. We rely on the compassion of the communities that we are a part of, compassion from individuals, companies, and municipalities. To date, we have raised between in-kind and cash donations, including the land sewer, uh, electric infrastructure donated by HMS and WT Excavating, for a total of almost $4.9 million. The remaining gap to goal, shown on the chart, $565,039, represents the increase in cost from our original budget estimate in 2019 for our community center. That, uh, increase during the past few years comes from supply chain issues and material costs that everyone has seen. I am confident in our ability to close that gap mainly because of awesome people like Liz Mueller, who's right there. I told her I'd call her out on this. She's our Director of Development here at VCP. She's going to help us close that gap. The unbudgeted expense that I am here to discuss with you is for the permit fees. The total is $189,582. We are asking the council to waive all of the permitting fees in order for us to build our village. The request to waive these fees is not about saving money, it is about saving lives. As an example, that amount of money would pay for the first month's rent and security deposit for 78 veterans. Another way to look at it is $189,582 would provide approximately 15 previously unhoused veterans a year's worth of housing and programming in our village. Just so there's no confusion, we're not asking for any incentives. Waiving of the fees doesn't make VCP any money. Unlike traditional development projects, no one's individual profits will increase by saving this cost. We want veterans off the streets this winter. It will take us additional time to get back to our donors and request additional donations to pay the permitting fees if they are charged. Truthfully, donors don't get too excited about donating money for permit fees. Uh, likely, this will take us a little bit of time to raise those dollars, and, um, if they are not waived, it may cause us to have to delay our building just a little bit longer and maybe into 2023. The problem with this is pushing that completion to 2023 means that it'll be another winter with veterans who are willing to give up their lives for their country, to defend the Constitution, men and women who served in uniform, sleeping on our streets, in our parks, and on our sidewalks. We absolutely value our partnership with the City of Longmont, its dedicated staff, HMS, and the community at large. We are grateful for the vision that the Longmont Veterans Housing Coalition had in 2018 that brought VCP to Longmont. This village will be the first of its kind in the nation, where we, as a community, are going to be housing homeless veterans as part of a planned subdivision. There is no place else in the country that's going to be doing that. We are literally breaking new ground, pun number two. Uh, VCP, I want you to know, VCP is here to stay. Um, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for that presentation. I can't imagine anybody in this community not thinking this is a good idea. Uh, do, are any of the councilors want to make, uh, comments? Counselor, uh, let's see if I can get you on here. Gotcha. Counselor Waters.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Uh, so are you ready for a motion now?
Yes, yes, if you'd like.
Let me make one observation, and then I'll make a motion. Um, we heard earlier that, uh, this, this project was placed into a metro district, uh, that was approved by this council as part of the approval of the Mountain Brook development a couple of years ago. Um, just for the record, the veteran, neither the Veterans Community Project nor the eight, the late eight lots that were donated to Habitat and I see you up in the back of the room, neither of those are in the metro district. For the, for the record, the project, I think, got approved, the development got approved, Mountain Brook, because the metro district was part of the package, but these were not in it, just for the record. So with that, I move that we waive 100% of the development fees for the Veterans Community Project.
I'll second. Thank you. It has been, the motion has been made by Counselor Waters, seconded by Counselor Hidalgo Ferring. Let's, uh, have a discussion. Does anybody want, have anything to say? Oops, I see somebody here. So, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Peck. And so, just to say a few different items, I'm absolutely supporting this, by the way. Uh, the Habitat for Humanity and the VCP are both outstanding organizations that every community should be proud to support, that they exist in. As such, they were brought to us as a voluntary alternative agreement to our affordable housing, um, policies, right? And so, as both Habitat for Humanity and the Veterans Community Project have come back to us for, you know, be it fee waivers or additional help in one way or another, I think it's, it behooves us as a council to maybe look at the next time a voluntary alternative agreement comes to us and make sure that we are trying to address these issues beforehand versus having to make sure that they come, versus them having come back to us later on in the process. Um, I do understand that there are obviously shifting costs due to timing and supply chain issues and labor costs and things like that. But as we look at this going forward for just our general affordable housing policies, it's just something that we should consider, uh, the next time something like this comes before us. Um, also, I just want to say that, I think most of my colleagues know, the cost to the individual taxpayer for each, for services for each unhoused individual in our community that doesn't have secure housing is much higher than it is for this $189,000 in fee waivers, uh, especially on a per annum basis. And so, just for folks to think that, you know, we may be giving away money as a city, in fact, in concept, we're saving money this way. And so I just wanted to also illustrate that, if, if you look at the studies. So I'm, have very vocally been a housing-first advocate, and this is one concept of transitionary housing that the city needs very desperately, as well as some other concepts, because the traditional concept of sheltering that we're all used to, it does not work anymore. At least, it does not work on, on a, a large scale. And so, to encourage this is just the right way to go. Thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I totally agree with Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Um, the amount of services that we would have to provide to each of these individual veterans would far outweigh the cost of what it does to give them, to waive the fees. So, um, I would definitely support this, um, movement. So, let's vote. So that vote carried unanimously. Thank you, and congratulations. I see the veterans there. Is, uh, you, you cheering section? So, thank you for coming and supporting as well. So we have another item here, another presentation, which is going to, the proposed increase for entry-level compensation for part-time, temporary, non-benefited employees. Uh, so Gina Perino is going to give us a a report on this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Longmont City Council. Uh, my name is Gina Perino, and I am the Compensation and Benefits Manager for the city. Um, it's nice to meet you all for the first time. This evening, we would like to talk with you about the entry-level compensation for our part-time and our non-benefited employees.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Uh, is, some of you may remember from Joanne Zias' Workplace of the Future presentation, the labor market is literally, um, just swinging in wild ways right now. And one particular area that we're really having trouble with is our temporary and our part-time non-benefited employees and being able to actually recruit and retain this staff. Recently, Human Resources reviewed wages for similar entry-level positions in the community and found that the City of Longmont is paying dramatically lower than similar level entry-level positions in other entities. Uh, the difference in pay is having an impact on our ability to recruit and retain staff. And one area that we're seeing the absolute greatest impact in is in our recreation group. Um, next slide. Currently, this slide just, uh, this slide shows the bare minimum that they would need to be able to safely operate programs and facilities, and how far they are at this point in time from being able to do that. Currently, we have temporary employees that are making anywhere from the Colorado minimum wage of $12.57 an hour to 14, 40, or, I'm sorry, $15.40, um, which are all below any of the other locations that we looked at for entry-level staffing. What we would like to request is to increase the entry-level compensation for our temporary and part-time non-benefited positions to a minimum of $15.50 per hour to be able to recruit and retain staff for all of our part-time, non-benefited, and temporary positions citywide. Uh, additionally, adjustments would be made to prevent compression within job series. An example of that would be, I will use recreation. If we have lifeguards that get raised, then we would have to look at, of course, the senior guard and the pool managers. But we would account for the comp, the compression in positions as well. And I'm going to have Jim Golden speak to our financial impacts piece.
Thank you. Mayor Peck, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Chief Financial Officer. So on the financial impacts, we, um, I think we didn't put into communication what we project citywide, and so we were able to pull that together for you for tonight's meeting. Our citywide estimate for the remainder of this year is $255,212. And then for a full year of that, that amount would be $376,025. So, what we're saying is that if necessary, we could, uh, cover the 22 costs for the general fund from the city's stabilization reserve. I don't think that's going to be necessary. I believe that, uh, once we close out, the 2021, uh, audit will know that we might have sufficient fund balance available, that we will be able to cover that with, um, fund balance outside of the stabilization reserve. But we do have, um, oh, 3.11 million in the stabilization reserve, and it's to grow this year to 4.16 million based on how the projected budget was, was put together. So, uh, it shouldn't be a, a problem to cover. We are going to, if, if you direct us to go forward, we're going to, uh, do an appropriation ordinance that would, would include the, um, fund balance as a source of funding for the, the general fund. And so, oh, could you go back? I'm not finished there, thanks. So there are other funds that would be impacted are also listed here, um, on the left side of the screen, the golf fund, the street fund, public safety fund, uh, the youth special revenue fund, senior special revenue fund, and the museum special revenue fund. These are all smaller amounts than the general fund, uh, but these are the amounts that make up those differences. And, and the golf fund would also need appropriation to pay for their share out of fund balance in '22. The rest of those funds would all be able to cover this, uh, increased costs from their existing '22 budgets. And then, just pointing out, and the reason why we have the citywide estimate for '23 in there is because, uh, by doing this, if we, we do have, get the direction to do this, we would then need to, uh, immediately include that as a funded item in the '23 operating budget, and that's why we have the full year cost of 376 in there as an FYI. So you can now change it, and this is just saying that And this is just saying that if you do direct us to go forward with this, we would come forward with two actions at the next regular meeting. First would be an appropriation ordinance, and secondly would be a resolution that would amend the compensation, the pay plan. So, that's all I have. We could answer any questions you have.
So, I want to add a couple of things. So, Mayor, Council, just so you know, so we start the hiring process for many of our temporary positions in January, February timeframe, so we can get ready for the summer period. It was about three weeks ago, I think it was three weeks ago, where Jeff Friesner and Karen started talking to me about the issues that we were having in filling the positions and where we were sitting. And so, this is one where I directed HR to immediately begin looking at the market, to see what the market salaries were doing for the entry-level positions, and get something ready for us to bring to you all as quickly as possible, because we need to get those positions hired and understand where we, you know, really understand the position we're going to be in as we get closer to the summer period. We hope that this works. I mean, what we can say is generally, we're seeing, like everyone else in the community and in the country, the hiring issue is hitting us. And we can see it here. But we need to make this move. If we're not able to hire these positions, we're going to have to start making decisions in terms of what programs we continue, what programs we don't continue. And at the end of the day, what we're able to open so that we can ensure the safety of our operations. And so, normally, we would like to talk to you all about this ahead of time, but this was such a significant issue and we're so far behind that we felt we needed to make this adjustment as quickly as possible so we can start recruiting with folks knowing where we're moving. And hopefully, we can fill those positions. But the numbers are reflecting are really what the entry-level positions, what they're paying entry-level positions at places like fast food restaurants and things like that. And so, we really, you've never heard me be probably this direct. We need to make this move so that we can fill these positions and we can continue our operations as we have in the past.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion from councilors? I do have, I do have a question. I agree that we need to raise the salaries. My question, though, is, in your interview process with people to fill these positions, have you had people come forward for these jobs? And salary was an issue for them? Or are we not getting any applicants at all?
Mayor, Members of the Council, Jeff Friesner, Recreation and Golf Manager. It's a combination of that, where people have accepted a job with us, are ready to come to work, and they have, in the meantime, before their first day, are actually going out and finding other jobs that are higher paying than what we can offer. We have had some luck with some job fairs that we've done this year, and, which is the first time we've done that. We've done four of them. And at each one, we've had around 30 people show up and maybe been able to hire two or three of them at each one of those. So, the pay, they are voicing that that is a concern and that they feel like they can go elsewhere to get a job.
Okay, okay, great. So, seeing no one, do we need a motion? Brian? Not really, no. But you can make a comment at the end of the meeting when it's final, public. So, seeing none, I will move then. Oops, we have, you know, I'll get better at this. Who was that?
That was me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. I think some of my colleagues remember that we actually did pass a policy concerning our contractors about a livable wage that was sponsored by the League of Women Voters, I believe. And so, this would just be consistent with us trying to keep a living wage as a corp tenant of the city council's vision for how we compensate our staff members. And also, the fact that we need to continue to provide great services to our residents. And anything less than that would be a disservice to them, especially looking at the most recent tax rules provided by our CFO. There's no reason, and according to, obviously, what was provided in the presentation, there's no reason to not go forward with this. And so, I move to increase entry-level compensation for part-time, temporary, non-benefited employees.
All right, that's been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, seconded by Counselor Martin. Let's vote. So, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation will be by Tony Chacon. It's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Longmont, Colorado, creating vacant seats for the county appointee, school district appointee, special district appointee, and mayor appointee to serve as commissioners to the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority.
Good evening, Mayor Peck, Members of Council. So, as just mentioned, before you tonight is a resolution that would allow, or the council would reconstitute the Urban Renewal Authority Board of the City of Longmont to bring it into compliance with state law. But what I also would like to do is give you a brief overview of urban renewal for those of you that may not be familiar with how it works here in the state of Colorado. So, I'm going to take a very brief presentation here. So, the state law in Colorado, number one, it allows cities to create urban renewal authorities. Number two, it also allows the cities to designate areas as blighted and then establish urban renewal areas and plans accordingly. The third thing the statutes allow for is it provides some mechanisms and tools by which the authority can assist the city in making improvements or pursuing redevelopment projects. And the last point here is, in 2015, the statute was amended that significantly changed the way in which these authorities have to operate here in the state of Colorado. So, what is the purpose? Well, it's pretty simple. In the state statute, the reason for allowing these authorities to be created was to eliminate conditions of slum and blight within the community and work in partnerships with the cities accordingly. So, what constitutes blight? Well, the statute is very explicit. I laid forth here all the various components of blight. The law states that you have to meet at least four of these conditions to determine that an area is blighted and therefore can be established as an urban renewal area. So, slum deteriorated or deteriorating structures apply, defective or inadequate street layouts, faulty lot layout, unsanitary or unsafe conditions, deterioration of site or the improvements, unusual topography, or inadequate public infrastructure, utilities, so forth, defective or unusual title conditions. In other words, the paper that's associated with those ownerships. Buildings that are unsafe or unhealthy. Environmental contamination is another one. Health, safety, and welfare factors. And so, those are the primary ones. The last one on there is a circumstance where all the property owners would agree to be brought into a district, and there are some elements that are present. That is very rare. Usually, you will find one or two property owners that may object to being brought into a district. So, again, you would have to identify four of those. And the way that is done is through what's known as a condition survey, used to be referred to as a blight study. And then, those usually are brought forth to the council in consideration for any designation of urban renewal areas. So, what are the benefits of urban renewal? It provides a means of development, quote, "pay in its own way" in that the value, the increased value from that improvement actually can go back into making improvements in the area or into the project itself. It can improve the attractiveness of an area, hopefully attracting new investment as projects proceed. It improves the health, safety, and welfare for residents and businesses, levels the economic playing field with what are known as greenfields. And so, usually, urban renewal areas are associated with dire conditions in neighborhoods, which usually increase the cost to the development community. And so, this puts it in somewhat of an equal footing, possibly. And then, it improves the economic prosperity by creating jobs and providing new housing. So, what are the implementation tools that the statutes give the authority? Well, there's two primary ones. One, first of all, it does give them the right to proceed with eminent domain on any acquisitions if need be. However, that can only be done with authorization of city council. And usually, that's either integrated into the plan that's produced or it's by separate resolution ordinance. So, they don't just have carte blanche, the authority does not have carte blanche ability to condemn property. It does require some approval of the city council. And then, the second part, which is most probably the most important tool, is access to what is known as tax increment funds. So, what are tax increment funds? Simply, instead of going through all this, simply, the tax increment is the value that the property increases by relative to the improvement. So, if a parcel was appraised at $10,000 and then the new project comes in at $100,000, the $90,000 is considered increment that can go to the authority or some portion can go to the authority for their expenditure on improvements or redevelopment in that particular district. So, the one thing I want to point out, increment is not a new tax. So, there is no additional mill levy imposed on the property or properties within the district. It only utilizes the existing tax base that's in the area. And it does not increase tax rates on properties directly, okay? Now, people will say that there is an increase on taxes, but that generally, that's indirect by virtue of improving the conditions of the area. Thereby, the appraisals on all properties in that area could go up as a result. So, this is a graphic just kind of showing more explicitly what tax increment is. And you will notice the green line, which would be the incremental value of project or projects. And then, you notice the red line, which is a stair step. So, the way the law works is that a base valuation is set at the time before the project proceeds. And every year or every two years, it can ratchet up the base value. And that value goes to the taxing entities. It's not part of the increment. So, some persons will tell you, well, the taxing entities aren't getting any benefit. But in reality, they are getting a benefit. The other provision, just for information, and we can get into this further down the line on some study sessions, is school districts are actually backfilled on any lost opportunity from revenue. So, there is a provision where the state is effectively giving the school districts money that otherwise they may have got if that project was built not using tax increment. So, the authority's roles and capabilities, implement the municipality's plans. They can partner with the city in terms of funding or the improvements, receive and reinvest tax increment funds as they see fit or appropriate. They can acquire property for improvement. They can actually own and operate facilities, public facilities, if need be. And maybe one of the more important things is that they can actually issue debt that has no relationship to the debt of the city. So, there's no burden on the part of the city unless the city agrees to back any of that debt. And provide resources and support to urban renewal district businesses. So, for example, you could create a fund that helps them hire employees or something like that. Enter into development agreements with public-private partnerships and ability to raise revenue from sources other than the TIF itself. So, for example, they could get grants from other governmental entities. They could actually get grants from the city, whatever that might be. And again, the authority cannot impose a property tax mill levy. They do not have that authority under the statutes. So, what did House Bill 151348? And we usually use a shorter version, which is House Bill 1348. The 15 represents the year in which it was established. But there were two main changes in the law. Number one was that access to the tax increment now requires the cities to negotiate with each of the taxing entities impacted to determine how much of that tax increment the authority can utilize in making improvements and any redevelopment activity. So, it used to be that 100% of the tax increment came to the authority. This amendment to the statute now requires that to be negotiated. And then, the second thing, which is also important, actually, is which is before you this evening, is that the authority board has to be reconstituted to add other members beyond the city council. And there's a representative for the counties. So, in this case, there are two counties would have to agree on assigning somebody. The school district, basically, we have one school district, so they would assign somebody. And then, special district. So, that would be any other entity that taxes or has taxing ability within the boundaries of the city of Longmont. And then, there's a fourth one there, which is an additional mayoral appointment. And the reason for that is to make sure that you have an uneven board number for voting purposes. So, in our instance here, it would require eventual mayoral appointment also. And just let you know, that requires consent of the entire city council as to that appointee. So, just history. So, the city actually was petitioned and created the authority in 2006. So, the authority is in place, and they chose to appoint the city council to serve in that capacity as the board. And that was permissible under state law, and it's still permissible today, with the exception, you now have to add that three or four members to the board. So, the authority, actually, the city council, I should say, established the Southeast Longmont Urban Renewal District in 2006 and the Twin Peaks Mall Urban Renewal District in 2009. So, we do have two active urban renewal areas. We have, the city has yet to institute any tax increment capacity on either of those, with the exception of the Village at the Peaks, which the city did create a TIF area and has been generating tax increment that has been used to pay off the bonds that the city issued on that particular project. So, current board status. So, right now, the board is not in compliance fully with the state statute. So, any new urban renewal activity or any amendment to any of the urban renewal activities that have been done to date, substantial amendment, requires that this board be put in place before they can do any activity or action or even any discussion on urban renewal needs or activities within the city. And so, though, again, there would have to be four seats created. They do not have to be filled immediately. The onus is put on those entities to assign a person to sit in those seats. So, once you reconstitute the board, the board can then move forward with any urban renewal activity at its discretion, regardless if those entities have assigned anybody to sit in those seats. And so, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. And again, before you this evening, the only action we are requesting is reconstitution of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Do we have any questions from councilors? Seeing any, would someone like to make a motion? Oh.
Great, good.
Number eight, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Tony, go back to your, next to the last, or the last slide before, thank you. So, is it, will it be county commissioners who make these appointments?
Okay, so, yeah, it's, no, it's each of the entities. So, the counties, because it'd be Weld County and Boulder County, the commissioners in each of those entities would have to agree on one appointee, one person.
So, it starts with the So it starts with the commissioners, that was where I was going with my question. It's not staff.
Nope, it's the commissioners.
It's the commissioners. And in Weld County and Boulder County, those commissioners would have to get together and just agree on one.
Yeah, and we do understand from previous discussions in the past that Weld County may acquiesce to Boulder County's.
Okay, because I was going to ask, could we be in that meeting when they, when they go through that discussion? Just to watch?
Well, well, we will be asking them for a resolution or something.
Yeah, okay, that'd be interesting to.
And you could sit in on, I'm sure, on their public hearing.
I'd love to sit in on that one, yeah.
Oh, and just let me say, the county commissioners do not have to have an appointee that actually serves on the commission. They can pick whoever they want in the community.
Okay, it doesn't have to be a commissioner, just somebody.
No.
Representing county interests.
Right.
Under special districts, how many special districts are, would have to get together and make this decision?
Well, Longmont's somewhat lucky. I think we have a total of six.
So the metro district we approved.
Two metro districts, no, actually, three metro districts.
And the other, the other.
There was a left-hand water district, and it's just a handful, which will make it easier. I can tell you, having worked in Aurora, they had over 150 districts.
And they had to agree on one.
And they never did.
Yeah. And then, and then it would be school board members, whether it's a board member or someone else.
No, okay, so school board and special districts, they actually have to have a person that is serving on a board.
So it would be a school board member?
Yes.
They're going to love this. So, so just describe for me, we adjourn, or we recess, when we get to new business. We recess, these meetings take a few minutes. We recess, we reconvene as the Longmont Urban Renewal Authority, we do whatever business, we recess back into council. These people are going to have to show up for that five-minute period of time on a Tuesday night?
Well, well, one thing, once we do get the board reconstituted, we would likely have to have a meeting to talk about bylaws, and how those meetings would be conducted. And so in that discussion, that's how we would figure out how to logistically work it. Now, the authority, at least presently, I don't see it as being highly active. So we most probably could easily accommodate it within our current city council meeting somehow. Unless there's a conflict, and you can imagine, you get the other four, I can't make it that night, right?
I could just, I could just say, the mayor will figure that out, I'm sure, how to negotiate all those things.
Yeah.
All right, just wanted to be clear on how this is going to play out, thanks.
Well, unfortunately, the legislature didn't think of some of these particular issues when they changed the statute.
Yeah. Sandy, if this comes up for reconsideration, we might have some input to our legislators on what they could do here, right? Thanks.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. It doesn't seem like we have a whole lot of choices statutorily, and so I move Resolution 202254.
On my mic, that was moved by Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez, seconded by Councilor Waters. Let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you. We will now notify each of those entities of their responsibilities. Appreciate it.
This is going to be fun. So we are down to our legislative bills by Assistant City Manager Sandra Cedar. What do you have for us?
Thank you, Mayor Peck, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager. You know, I remember this conversation with the urban renewal bill, and we actually did make comments saying that, you know, we would, we would prefer to just, you know, run our own urban renewal boards. But this was the compromise that was struck, which is why it looks so weird. This is the compromise that was struck between us having some control of what the boards looked like, and the counties having veto over our urban renewal district. So that was the original bill, was that the counties could veto anything we wanted to do. So I think we still won, sort of. Anyway, I do have two bills for you today. The first one is House Bill 221273 concerning protections for election officials. So similar to the one that you saw around code officials, this is similar for people who are conducting elections. And considering how contentious things have become, it just seems to me like it's more and more important all the time to make sure that we keep these elections as clean as possible. And so because we want to keep them safe, accurate, and timely, staff recommends that city council supports House Bill 1273.
So I'm going to move that we support House Bill 1273. So that has been moved by me, Joan Peck, seconded by Councilor Martin. Let's vote. So we're going to support that unanimously.
Great, thank you so much. The second bill, House Bill 221287, concerns protections for mobile home park residents. So this one amends the Mobile Home Park Act to be able to give some additional rights to people who are living in mobile home parks. So for example, prohibits a landlord from increasing the rent on a mobile home by more than 3% during any 12-month period. It requires landlords and landlords' representatives attend at least two public meetings if they ask. If the residents want to have a public meeting with the landlord, that the landlords need to be there and have that conversation. Clarify that the landlord is responsible for, you know, making sure that they're repairing infrastructure, as well as clarifying some triggering events that would, you know, make sure that people understood if the landlord was going to sell the property. So it really just gives some additional clarification, some more transparency for folks who live in mobile home communities, as well as some, some rights, because I think a lot of times what, certainly, I don't know what we have found necessarily in Longmont, but just generally as a national trend, you know, sometimes that isn't dealt with as well as it could be. So because housing priorities are important to the city council, the staff recommends that city council supports House Bill 1287.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll move we support House Bill 1287.
Okay, that's been moved by Councilor Waters, seconded by Susie Haddago-Faring, Councilor Haddago-Faring. Let's vote.
I'm not seeing any opportunity to vote. I'll put me in the yes column.
Okay. We'll get all the bugs worked out. So that passes unanimously, thank you. Sandy, I do have a question about that trailer. Does that cover HOAs as well? Or is it just the landlord who owns the property?
It's, it's just the landlord that owns the property.
Okay.
Yes, although there are other HOA bills that you've seen, and you'll probably see some more coming up.
Yep, yep. Thanks. So we're now at final call, public invited to be heard. Is there any public? I see three publics, three people. Does anybody want to, do you have anything you want to talk about? I'm sorry, I didn't see. Oh, Paul, I didn't.
I know, I'm invisible, because you wouldn't recognize me dressed like this.
That's right.
Paul Tiger 350 Kimbark. So I just heard something earlier this evening, and that was, is that talking about how Longmont's getting older. The census tells us that Longmont's getting younger. It's much younger than it was 10 years ago, mean age being 35. So we're getting younger, not older. Let's plan for younger people, all those kids that were here. Let's plan for them. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Hey there, Dallas Styles at 8 James Circle, just saying hello, because this is nice to see you guys in person for once.
Dallas.
Don't really have anything to say, but yeah, fun to, fun to be here.
We're great to see you.
That's right, in the flesh.
You are real.
I know, right? Not just, not just a face, yes. Thank you.
Nice to meet you. That's great. So we're now at mayor and council comments. I would like to make.
One more.
Oh.
Please.
Brian.
I'll be quick about it.
You don't have to be too quick.
It's funny, I just brought this issue up about three or four weeks ago with my boss, Molly Fitzpatrick, and brought it to her attention. And I just, but I just clarified something, and this has to do with job applications and and increasing them, the number of applicants. I thought that Longmont used the NeoGov application website, because that's what every other municipality in Colorado uses. Turns out, we don't. They just told me that we have our own portal to apply for jobs. So I hold my critiques of the NeoGov website, which are numerous. That's a horrible application process and the way they do it, and, but, but, and I just sat down and did one through our portal. And it's pretty efficient, but I thought it might be a good idea, especially for entry-level positions, that you have a way to apply other than over a computer. A lot of people don't have computers. It's particularly difficult on a cellphone. And I just think that being able to submit an application in a different type fashion might help generate some additional job applicants. Because again, you know, some, some people don't have a laptop, a lot of people don't. Most people, especially younger, are relying upon cellphones, and even a lot of people don't have cellphones. There's like, I was like, 10% of the public doesn't even have a cellphone. So, so maybe open up the application process and, and provide them alternative means other than the online portal. That's all.
Thank you.
And don't ever go with NeoGov for application process. That's a horrible web, that's a horrible software.
Is there anybody else out there I'm missing? So seeing nobody else, I'll close the public invited to be heard, and we are now at mayor and council comments. I do want to remind council that the comment section is not necessarily for discussion with staff. These are things that, comments at the end of the meeting, that you would like to give kudos to, inform us about, et cetera. So do I see, I have Counselor Waters in the queue.
Number eight, thank you, Mayor Peck. Karen Roney, I am going to address this to Karen Roney. Karen, is this your last meeting? So I don't want to get into a dialogue with Karen, but I would like to say, Karen, I'm a short timer here, I've been here just a short time, but how much I appreciate and admire your work, your contributions to the city over a generation and a half or so. And just as one resident and as one council member, you, I will miss your contributions, your smiling face, and, and the joy of having had a chance to work with you. So God bless you and Godspeed in the next chapter of your life. I hope it's sweet and long and healthy.
That was perfect. And I'll miss your laugh. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Peck. Some folks know that Councilmember Yarborough and myself were in Washington, D.C. a couple weeks back for the National League of Cities Conference. I would just like to say that the, the conference primarily usually focuses on infrastructure. That was no different in the sense that they just recently passed that infrastructure bill. And so we had a lot of conversations about how that funding is being used, as well as who is administrating it. So, you know, there was conversations about ARPA funding, affordable housing, legitimately physical infrastructure, from the smallest village to the largest city. I will say that on my behalf, what I really was focused on was talking about homelessness. And so when it came to addressing our legislators, I was talking about finding not one-time funding, but ongoing funding for the challenges of operations and maintenance of any sort of transitional housing and things like that. And then also talking to our fellow council members from the Front Range Metro Denver area about not having such a patchwork concept of homelessness policy or unhoused policies, because as we've seen what Aurora just recently passed, as well as a recent Wheat Ridge policy that was passed concerning long-term residents of hotels, we're having a lot of challenges of, of really finding cohesiveness at a regional level, which is going to be much more effective than addressing the issue municipality by municipality. And so those were the two things that I really focused on while I was out there. Just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other council comments, City Manager Harold.
Yes, Mayor Council, I do have one question. So we have our first LHA board meeting. I believe that is next Tuesday, April 5th, for the fourth meeting. And wanted to just talk to you all about, do you want to start at the normal time of 7:00 that we have for the council meetings? Or do you all want to look at an earlier start time for those meetings?
I think that might have to do with the two or three who are working other jobs outside of council, so. I don't know. Okay, thank you.
What number is number four?
Oh.
Counselor Haddago-Faring.
It's me. You know, actually, I'm looking at my calendar, and I do request that we stick it, stick with the 7:00 start, start time. I apologize for anyone who was hoping to get started early. But, so I appreciate that.
We just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, 7:00. Thank you, Shakita. Eugene, our city attorney.
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. So that's it. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Martin, and I will second that to adjourn the meeting. It's vote.
Yay.
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 Yeah.
Turn on my.
So that passed unanimously. Good night.